Good evening, welcome to the workshop session of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Brew. We have a quorum present with Council members McKenzie, Karn, and Arnold. And so we will get things started at this time. Councilmember Arnold?
Yes, can I ask that we move an item on this workshop agenda, number five to number one? Because one of the presenters in this group has a child that needs to go to school tomorrow. Does anyone have any objections to that?
Any issues with that? Alright, hearing done, we'll move item five to number one. So we've got nonprofit updates from Old National Merchants, Style Mob University, and Sage Hands.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to give a little background, or you can, yeah, come on up. I asked each one of the nonprofits that we provided funding to this year to give us an update on where they are as far as the spending is concerned. With the resources that we've provided, understanding that they are nonprofits and they receive other resources from other areas. However, I wanted to get an update and also wanted the entire council to hear where they were with that spending.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening.
There is a video that's supposed to show us, the video going to show now. It's a quick video, just kind of give you an overview of what our fall semester looks like. We have gave three students from Skyview High School.
Can you just introduce yourself for the record?
I am so sorry.
That's alright.
So I am Tiffany Nicole, I'm the founder of Style Mob University. I just took the initiative, just thinking that people knew me. But yes, I'm Tiffany Nicole, Style Mob University. Style Mob University is a school of cosmetology studies. And back in March, or was it June, March? We were blessed to get City of College Park to give seventy-five thousand dollars to our students from, that go to our school from Skyview and College Park community. So from then to now, we have started our fall semester, which we have given three students from Skyview a scholarship, blessed far. We also very hands-on at Skyview, where we are there, we're doing their community services. We're doing their, what is it, career day thing. So we're very active with Skyview and the City of College Park. So this video shows a quick snippet, it's very quick because the fall semester just started, the end of August. But you will see some of the students that are in their freshman class, where they're learning the science of cosmetology. And by the end of the course, they'll be in for a year. So by August of next year, they would be going into a business development course, where they will be learning how to launch businesses. Where we have them to launch businesses in the City of College Park and also give back community service hours. Okay, so that was really quick, but what you saw was the science of cosmetology studies. A lot of times when we tell people that we're a cosmetology school, they just think it's just all here. They have no idea that there is a lot of science and community health that is involved in cosmetology studies. And in their first nine weeks, we are very hands-on on understanding how to keep our community safe and how to properly deal with chemical surfaces. Any questions?
Why don't we do all the presentations and then we'll take questions?
Okay.
At the end, thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
So do you have some, from Old National Merchants Association? Nope, alright, Sage Hands?
First, I'd like to say, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Pastor Brian Webb of Faith Walkers Community Church here in Atlanta, Georgia. I certainly like to give honor to Mayor Brew, council members, city staff, and members of College Park community. First time I came up here, it was a doozy. To say the least, from my personal experience, you know, getting this involved between the public servants and then also the nonprofits that do the work. And it taught me a lot, but I do appreciate the work you do and the jobs you have before you. I am here today to just recap and to share my personal witness and testimony to what was happening in regards to boots on the ground. So I can speak to those experiences firsthand. In regards to the budget, the money, I'm not the financial officer, but you can defer those questions. Well, first of all, there should be a sixteen-page document that all of councilperson should have. And all of those details are in there, but if you have any specific questions, you can defer those to Robert Gilchrist. I'm gonna go ahead and jump right into this, and y'all be patient with me, because I am a pastor and a preacher. Amen, somebody?
Amen.
Alright, I thought I saw one deacon in here.
And a pastor.
Well, hello pastor?
No, no, there's a pastor.
What, right here? I'm sure it's pastors, evangelists, apostles, the whole five-fold ministry in here right now. But I'm gonna go ahead and jump forward. The late Mayor, Jack P. Logino, who once said, "Public service is not about power, it's about people." It's about being there when your community needs you most. Those words ring especially true tonight. Because what happened at Chelsea Gardens tested all of us. It tested our systems, it tested our patience, and it tested our compassion. So tonight, I stand not to criticize, but to communicate the facts, to honor the work, and to acknowledge the heart that so many poured into this effort. I want to certainly thank councilperson Tracy Arnold, who heard the call, who saw the smoke of the fire, if you will, and who began to organize some of these nonprofits to get boots on the ground. However, I also cannot ignore the crisis that I saw. I cannot ignore what we were actually all confronted with. I want to thank Sage Hands, I want to thank Community Growth Partners, and I want to thank Faith Walkers Community Church, who were, I consider, was in the trenches. I know that each public servant here did the best they could with the information and the resources and the pressures they had. Some may never fully understand everything that happened or why. But today, I'm simply here to report, we did what we could, and we did a great job at assisting folk in the middle of a crisis. You know, this situation reminds me of firefighters, and I thank God for firefighters. Firefighters don't start fires. But when you call them, they come and show up to fight the fire. They don't ask who started the fire. They don't say who's responsible for burning this community down. No, they just get the call and they go right into danger. And I think we know the people who've been firefighters since the very beginning. Saw the smoke, ran to the fire regardless of the opposition, regardless of the petty infighting, regardless of any agendas. The only thing that mattered, that was smoke on the ground. And so organizations that may not even be exactly in the community saw the smoke and decided they needed to run to the fire. And I thank God today that we have people in our community and people in public service who consider themselves figuratively, not literally, as firefighters. Ah, they rush into danger, not because they caused it, but because somebody needs saving. And the truth is, when you fight fire, you run the risk of getting burned. That's what happened at Chelsea Gardens. We didn't start the fire, but when we saw the smoke, we came running. Running not to argue, running not to accuse, but to help put the fire out. Oh, that's what I stand on. When we first arrived, we saw conditions that broke my heart. Seniors and disabled residents living in darkness. No electricity, no running water, no food in the refrigerator, no transportation, insect and rodent infestations, nowhere to go, no plan for it, and the threat of eviction at the doorstep. Squatters that I bumped into myself. I'm willing to leave, and people were past due utilities, credit challenges, prior evictions, roadblocks preventing them from getting approved for other houses. Oh, this was bigger. Matter of fact, I gotta pause parenthetically and park right there, just to say, there were things that went beyond the scope of work that resources were provided for. And yet, we did it. Veterans, men and women who once fought for this country, now fighting just to find a place to lay their heads. Families sleeping in cars, trying to survive one more night while still seeking housing. This wasn't just a relocation project, it was a human crisis. And while some stood by or even stood against us, we chose to stand with people. From April through June, we committed ourselves fully to this relocation mission at Chelsea Gardens. We were on-site, often knocking on doors, talking with residents, assessing their needs. And by the way, all I was called to do was door knock, organize, to get them to their move destination. No, it turned into a lot more. I remember the first day I stepped onto that property, I said, "God walk with me, don't none of these people know me." I went to the first door, the first door I went to, it was on a high level when you first get in there. I won't tell you exactly who the person is, but I know who it is. I knocked on that door. The reason why I knocked on the door is because I saw a sign on the door that said, "Faith on the Door." It said, "Faith on the Door." I said, "This the first door that I'm about to go to and knock on. I need to see the believers and how we treat one another. The Bible says, 'We gotta watch that.'" So I looked at the believer door, and I knocked on that door. And thank God, I knocked on that door, because there was a person on the other side of that door that completely gave me their whole confession. I had no idea what to do, but I sat down and listened. Yeah, I sat down and listened, saw empty alcohol bottles everywhere. Saw all type of things that she was going through, her depression from her childhood to now. And I said, "Thank you, Lord, I was just knocking on the door, I had no idea what you really sent us in here for." And by the way, that day, I was determined that that one person would get all the way through the process. And if you need her name, you'll get it in the report. But yes, she can attest that I stuck with her, we stuck with her, and got her safely to a better living condition. Just because we needed to do that for that woman and the depression and the anxiety she was under. I'm gonna leave that there and get through this, families sleeping in cars, we saw the worst of it, but we knocked on them doors. Seventy-two occupied doors and identified three hundred and fifty-one vacant units. We maintained ongoing contact with fifty-four residents. We successfully helped forty-two residents relocate safely. We placed six families in hotels, fully managed and financed. We covered deposits, housing application fees, utility bills. We purchased food, groceries, waters, and toiletries for those most in need, as well as storage and moving trucks with movers. We provided over thirty rides to leasing office, the Housing Authority, College Park, Power Office, grocery stores, and hotels. And I want to be clear, it took all that. It took every bit of that. If you was in this for yourself, you need to go somewhere else then. But those that came for the real reason, you benefited from seeing a smile on a person's face that thought hope was gone. You benefited because you helped somebody mama out and they know you. You benefited because I've already been invited to the barbecue. See, that's my pass right there, that's my credentials right there. When I can go back to wherever they at and they say, "Hey, how you doing? You coming over for the barbecue, Reverend Webb?" Maybe, depends on what you're cooking, now I'm a fitness trainer, so. And I'm gonna go ahead and close in closing here. And say again, to Mayor Brew, City Council, and City Staff, your job is hard, incredibly hard. And a pastor knows something about that. Because when I came into this situation, I had no idea what I was being called into. I had no idea of Chelsea Garden, I was just coming to help. And I thank God for our church, that we don't ask why, we just come. We see smoke, we are firefighters. We're gonna come and show up and fight for that fire and put that fire out. And so I want to say to you all, unity, more than anything, is more important when it comes to people. And if we do more of that, we can do greater things than what we were able to accomplish here. We may not have always all agreed, but we all wanted the same outcome, I know that. To protect the people of Chelsea Gardens. Because of this collective effort, here's what we can celebrate. Yes, most residents are now in a safer living conditions. And I can attest to you, my wife is right here, and she can attest, I became all those people's pastor. Because my phone was ringing at ten and after ten PM at night. And there was times I left Sunday service to go and deliver stuff to, from my service, to go do service for the people at Chelsea Garden that needed me on that Sunday. And it's a fact. And we can celebrate now that those people that we guided, fed, and cared for with dignity. We didn't solve everything, but we brought light into a dark situation. We brought order to chaos, we brought hope where there was none. Chelsea Garden is not just a story about one apartment complex. It's a reflection of who we are as a city and who we can become when we choose people over politics. When we respond like firefighters, not asking who started the fire, but how can we help put it out? We show the true spirit of College Park. This is what happens when faith and public service meet. When pastors, nonprofits, business owners, policymakers, and neighbors link in arms instead of pointing fingers. Because at the end of the day, our measure is not entitled to vote. It is in the lives we touch and the fires we help extinguish. So no, we don't worry about resistance. Because the Bible reminds us in Isaiah fifty-four and seventeen, "No weapon formed against me shall prosper. If God be for you, who can be against you?" So as I take my seat, to everyone who helped fight this fire, thank you, thank you, and thank you. To those who doubted but still stayed engaged, thank you. And to every resident who survived the storm, may God continue to bless you and keep you and shine upon you. Together, we didn't just put out a fire, we sparked a new flame, a flame of unity, compassion, and hope for the City of College Park. Thank you, and may God bless you. My name is Pastor Brian Webb of Faith Walkers Community Church.
Thank you, sir. Is there a representative from Old National Merchants Association? For a report?
No.
Okay, alright, we'll take any questions, we will start with Mayor Proton.
First, I want to thank Style Mob for the video and for the work that you were doing, it's invaluable. Enjoyed your presentation and looking forward to, to see what, what's the next for these, these young ladies and your students. So I wanted to thank you for that, Pastor Webb, thank you for your passion. It's obvious that your heart is in it. And we are glad that you were able to accomplish the things that you were able to do and to make an impact in those lives. Because everybody need it, they need that passion that you have, they need the compassion. And I want to say thank you very much as well.
Councilmember Karn?
Alright. Wonderful presentations, wonderful updates. Do we think Old National may come later, and if they show up, we want to hear from them?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I definitely would like to hear from them as well. Cosmetology, well, that's something else, it's just gone a whole nother level. I like when you mentioned about the health thing with it. A lot of people say with cosmetology, one of the best ways to great cosmetology is, is the health component that makes a big difference. You know, the healthier you are, the, it makes it a whole lot better, you know, if you know what I mean. So I like that component of it. And it's big business, as big as it gets, and we want to make sure we're producing professionals of all varieties and all types. So we definitely appreciate it. And working with Skyview High School in particular is, I think, a good choice, where some of those kids are looking for the right direction. And showing them as wide of possibilities as possible is always good. Pastor Webb, thank you so much. Boots on the ground, can't say it enough. I tell people over and over again, if you're depending on government to solve all of your problems, I can tell you right now, you're gonna be let down in any city, any county, with any governing body. It takes an entire community. Government cannot fix it and solve it alone, believe me when I tell you. It takes the churches, it takes the community nonprofits, it takes a plethora of neighborhoods, and it takes what I like to call a partnership of protection. Where we watch each other's backs and we cover each other, and cover each other's blind spots. You know, the church has blind spots, you know? Government has blind spots, we all do. But we gotta work to cover each other, because at the end of the day, we're coming home to the same communities with the same situations. And every community has challenges. But we're just thankful for that. I would definitely want to get an extra copy of the document, I saw it at one point. And I don't, did we speak on the phone, or was it Mr. Gilchrist? Because I know we, it must have been Mr. Gilchrist.
Gilchrist.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay, well, yeah, 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 well, we're really excited, and we definitely appreciate all the work you did out there.
Councilmember Arnold?
Actually, I don't have any, any questions. As I understand it, Mr. Emanuel is, Mr. Emanuel Rainey is stuck in traffic, so he probably won't make it before we finish our, so I'll schedule him for another day to give updates. But I just want to thank both nonprofits that did present today. But, um, I just want to thank, uh, both nonprofits that did present today for their partnership. Um, I really appreciate you.
Alright. Next item.
Next agenda item is discussion on a special event permit for Mount Zion AME Church, College Park to host a Jazz on the Lawn on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, rain date, November first, twenty twenty-five at Charles E. Phillips Park, Ward Four, with an end time of five thirty PM. This item is requested by Queenie Brown, Deputy City Clerk.
Hello, Mayor, Council, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council, sorry about that. Um, this should be the second to last special events I'm, I'm coming to you for this year. Um, for this event, of course, the Mount Zion AME Church, they are here to present to you and explain a little bit before they come up. Um, they're asking to host a jazz festival, October twenty-fifth with a rain date of November first. Um, the end time is set at five thirty because the park does close after dusk. And to assure safety and make sure everything cleaned up, that's why we asked for five thirty. Um, as well as they are asking for two food trucks, parameters were given for that. They did ask for elevated stage staff to decline that. They will be located in the splash pad area due to its proximity to the restrooms and convenience. Um, just be mindful that there is a soccer game also that day. So it's going to be a lot of foot traffic within the park, which is why we're asking for two EMTs as well as four police officers. Um, I believe I have Ms. Reverend Powers here to speak. You can go.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Broome, uh, Mayor Pro Tim McKenzie. I am the Reverend Dr. Esther K. Powers, the pastor of Mount Zion AME Church in College Park, Georgia. Uh, I also would like to acknowledge my congregation, some of them who are here in College Park residents. Y'all stand up for just a minute so they can see you, amen.
Amen.
I'm not going to preach, but I am gonna plead. Uh, yes, we are asking for a special permit for a jazz festival. It's something we normally host at our church. Uh, but we wanted to return to College Park because of our historical connections to College Park. So it's not just any jazz festival. We will be celebrating a hundred and twenty-five years. And Mount Zion AME Church started at Harvard Avenue and Napoleon. I rode down there today and took some updated pictures. Uh, we have a rich history through our membership and our time here in the city. We only left because we were forced out when the fifth runway expansion took place. I mean, you can look around College Park, uh, members of our church are etched in the history of College Park. The, um, Brady Center, the Freeman Health Center. Uh, I think two of the predominantly black, well, all black at that time, schools are named after members of College Park. And so we wanted to return to the place that gave us birth. And even though we are now located on Riverdale Road, my members get very upset if you say Mount Zion AME and don't say Mount Zion AME College Park. Uh, so that heritage is very important to us. So we wanted to return to this place for that. We are a small congregation because when we were displaced, uh, for the fifth runway, we sort of had an Exodus experience. The congregation wandered for almost, uh, ten years trying to find a place. And a lot of the members then dispersed and went to other churches. So, um, what you see is a pretty good representation of us. And so the thing that I want to plead for is that some of the requirements that we're being asked to meet is very taxing on our membership. We're looking at paying out close to two thousand dollars for four police officers, full EMT because of another event in the park. Um, and so I'm just asking for any kind of leadway that we can have in that concession uh, so that we can have this very, uh, important event in the life of our church to come back at a hundred and twenty-five years and celebrate in the city of College Park, uh, for this special event. That Sunday, we will be having our one hundred and twenty-fifth church anniversary. So it is a celebration weekend for us. Um, my members are mostly senior, uh, so we won't be having a lot of rowdiness. Uh, we will be calm, we will be collected and we will show respect to the place that gave us birth in nineteen hundred.
Thank you so much. Uh, Reverend Powers, I, I don't know that based upon the, uh, the, um, thoughts of staff in regard to what's necessary for EMTs and police that that's something that we might be able to move. But I'm, I'm certainly, uh, happy to support the event in terms of, excuse me, um, uh, through community enhancement on, on that personnel cost. So I'm certainly happy to do that.
And, um, I also wanted to address the stage that we were asking for. It's not a typical performance stage. It's only twenty-four inches high. Uh, just so that the musicians, we, uh, we are looking to have, uh, the Moth of Stillwell Jazz Band, uh, as our entertainment, uh, featured entertainment. So they don't have to sit their instruments on the ground. So to provide a place for them to place them, it's not like you would go to an arena amphitheater and it's a huge elevated stage. It's only twenty-four inches high. And I do have pictures, I had put together a whole presentation. And when I sit down, my jump drive got caught in the arm of the seat and so now it's corrupted.
Oh, no.
Uh, so unless I can plug in my laptop to your HDMI, I won't be able to show you. But I did have a picture of it and I'll be glad to supply it, uh, if needed.
Ms. Brown, what was the rationale in regard to the, the stage?
I don't think I had a rationale on the stage. When she explained it, I was like, kind of no. She said it was like a wood platform. I was like, for safety reasons, no. But if Mayor and Count, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council can decide to override me at any point, I'm okay with that.
Well, I, I mean, I'd, I'd, from a safety perspective, I think it would matter to.
Mayor, I have a question.
I'm, I'm right in the middle of a statement. I'm, I'll call on you just one second, thank you. Um, I, I think that that's probably best left to our, to, to the folks that handle safety issues. So, um, but, um, Mayor Proton?
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you, Pastor. And I'm very familiar with your congregation and we are really happy to have you coming back to the city of College Park. I had a question for Chief Rogers, uh, since you, uh, know the requirements for the, when I look on the application, it says it's seventy, they're expecting seventy-five persons and I have been to the church. I don't think we usually on a Sunday have, uh, even that number. So, uh, based on seventy-five persons, what would be the recommendation for police officers?
I'd say it's four, just because of their event and a lot of everything else that's going on, just to keep people, because we, they do have soccer games being played, so they don't have people migrate over just for, just to maintain in, like in a square, to maintain that they can enjoy their event without being bombarded because it is a public park. I can't stop everybody from coming, although it's their event. But if I have four officers positioned in a square, they can maintain a barrier for them to have their.
Okay, I, I wanted to see what your rationale was, cause I didn't, was trying to see, well, the people in the park should have more officers.
Right, no, 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 no.
Okay, but this is to protect the, the group, okay.
And their, and their, uh, um, event, just to have the officer stage kind of in a, in a square as a barrier for them.
Okay, I'm glad the mayor said that she would be willing to use her community enhancement, so that would take care of that. The other question is the time. I noticed on the application, Queenie, it says that they're setting up at four. Are you still setting up at four for an event that's going to, uh, have to end at five thirty?
Well, we were hoping just, oh, sorry. We were hoping to be able to end at least six or six thirty, which is, I checked the calendar and that's sort of dusk at that time. Because, um, you know, just being an afternoon event and, um, you know, we don't want to be in the park at dark either. Uh, but just at least having enough time to set up at four have, we were hoping to have at least a couple of hours of music. Um, so if there's any leadway for that, we would love to be able to, to do that as to divine by dusk.
So would you need to set up at three instead of four if you wanted to have it from four to six? Chief, just kind of, uh, can, can they do to six?
When, um, when it was originally came, they had asked for eight.
Right.
And because, uh, our hours of operation as far as the park and men in the park is at dusk, uh, I couldn't agree with them going past dusk. So if they want to set up early and have their event a little bit early, so they can at least start shutting down at five thirty and be completely out of the park at six, we still have to maintain the park ordinance.
Okay. And back to Pastor Powers, so can that work for you? Can it just start a little early?
Yeah, we can make the adjustment.
Okay, so on this, the setup time would not be four o'clock and the breakdown time would still be five thirty?
Okay.
Okay. Um, I don't have any more questions. I just think it's, uh, wonderful for you all to come back. We just did the, I just did the forward walk gone two weekends ago.
And some of our members were here for that.
Paid homage at the site where Mount Zion originally stood. And it was a very emotional experience for so many of us. Uh, I'm not, well, no one can tell me I'm not from College Park, cause I'm here, um, you know? But I just, you know, the, the, the persons that I've become close with, you could feel, you know, uh, you could feel the emotion there and the loss. But there was the joy again because we had so many people that were there celebrating with us on that day. So it does make my heart glad that you all were coming. Of course, I did reach out to Councilman Gay, he can ask his own questions, but it's beautiful to, uh, be able to have you all back.
I will say that that loss still is felt tangibly in our congregation. And it's something that they have not recovered from even today. So I do have one question for Mayor. When you say enhancement, I don't know that language, what does that mean?
Uh, I think Ms. Brown can, and she can, she can highlight.
Okay, cause we would love for the city to support the event in kind or anything else that you all can do to help us. That's what that means?
Yes.
Oh, y'all got special languages. Well, thank you so much. I mean, our members, uh, as you can see, uh, some of them serve on that, uh, committee. And we were here when, uh, and looking forward to when actual, the historic landmark that is scheduled to be placed at that site. Uh, and I rode by there today and took pictures and added it to the presentation of what it looked like in nineteen hundred and what it looks like today. And it was just, you know, looking at what was lost in that place and that the land is still there. And they could have possibly, I don't know, all of that history could have possibly still been there. Um, it is something that touches my heart and touches the people and those who still live in College Park that many of our members do that are here today. So thank you for hearing me out, thank you for your consideration and, uh, we look forward to being here on October twenty-fifth.
Councilmember Card?
Alright, sounds like a wonderful event. Uh, I haven't been to your church, but it sounds like a rich, rich.
You have a standing invitation.
Alright, well, if I can, if I can get my wife to allow me to, uh, get away one Sunday from my church. Uh, I'm my church's treasurer, so I have to be there just about every Sunday. Uh, but, uh, I may be able to, who knows? Uh, but, uh, it sounds like a wonderful event, really wonderful event. And, uh, it sounds like a positive plus for, for our community, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arnold?
It does sound like a wonderful event and, um, I may try to make it to your church on Sunday.
Please do, would love to have you.
Councilmember Gay?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration. I do have one thing.
Mayor Proton?
I would like to make sure that the entire two thousand is taken care of with community enhancement. So if there's a difference, I'll make it up.
I've already, I, I, whatever it is, I'll, I mean, the, the officers, I'll cover.
Okay, well, that's good. I didn't know, you didn't say I'm.
Thank you, thank you.
Next agenda item, Senior Garden and Tech Lab Presentation and Update by Holly Rodriguez.
Hello, everyone, how are you?
Good evening.
I am Holly Rodriguez. Um, yeah, I don't know why this never gets easier, but here we go. So I am here to give you guys an update on the Senior Garden and Tech Center. Uh, the picture you see up there is one of our wonderful seniors, Ms. Ruby. She has been there since day one. You see her helping me plant the very first seeds in the garden, so that was pretty awesome. Um, so I could not do a presentation without putting her on there. So just to tell you how it kind of went, the next slide. Um, once I got the contract in January, by February, I was ordering all the supplies needed for the garden. We installed a fence, which took a little while. The sidewalks were repaired, some of them were damaged there. Power came out and they put lights out there because it was extremely dark when the sun started to set. So we got electricity and that also helped us, um, power some of the things we needed at the garden. So we were so excited about those things. Um, however, next slide. Once we got started, we put the greenhouse together and in mid-February, a storm came and blew our greenhouse down. We went out there and we were very sad. Um, it was actually like our, the garden was due to open like in a couple of days. So we called our lovely councilwoman and I was like, what are we gonna do? And she says, don't worry, we'll get a new one. I was like, okay, and she did. And we got a new one and as you see, everyone's putting up the new one. Um, we got it together, we were able to open on time. We were, we had a great turnout for our opening. Um, almost all council was there, the news came out. We had some great reviews in the city. I actually had people from East Point calling, Brady Center saying, hey, what's going on over there in College Park? So it was pretty awesome and it felt great. Um, so we, at that same time, we opened the senior lab at the same time as the senior garden. Um, you see that Dwight Howard, he actually came out for our pre-opening, but him and his wife were there to support us. Um, we just had a lot of love and support in the city and ready to see this grow. Um, in April and May, we had a tea party first, which we had a great turnout there. And then our May event, I, I wasn't expecting, we had over a hundred and fifty people show up. We were scrambling for chairs and tables, I had no idea. So many people were gonna come out, but it was a wonderful event. Um, we had a little setback, but we overcame it and everything was great and I was happy and the community was happy. Um, May came along and we had to put, you can, May came along, we had to put a little pause on everything because of the chiller had to be replaced at Brady. And so we tried to keep it pushing, but it wasn't safe for our seniors to be out there, so we put a pause on it. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, she ordered a new sign for the garden, which is beautiful and we were so thankful for that. So while it was getting repaired, um, the sign was put up. In June, June came along, we opened back up. We were still getting things together, but the summer program started. So I was like, this is a good idea to invest in the children. And so we taught them the life cycle of a chicken. We hatched eggs and we had a great time with the children. While doing that, I worked on getting the lab together. Um, as you guys know, in July is when the funds came for the lab, so I was able to order more supplies and get us simple things like staplers and a whiteboard and all those fun things. So we are a fully functional computer lab now, I'm excited about that. As you see, we've seen many seniors now and I am so happy to be a part of College Park because I'm pretty savvy, but there was one senior, she was more savvier than I. And I am so happy that Jason was in the area and he sat down and he helped her. So that was like, oh, I love you, College Park. And so she was happy about that and her needs were met. And so that really helped. Um, the next one, this month, we are ready for business. We are open and we are hitting the ground running. October second, we launched our first official class where we gave away thirty laptops to the community. It was full, we actually had a waiting list for our next class that was, um, unfortunately, well, That was unfortunately, well, fortunately, it was supposed to happen on the 22nd, but due to government budget cuts, we've actually got postponed. So we're not able to have our class on the 22nd of this month, but we will have one soon. However, I did connect with Clayton County, they have a digital program where they're giving away laptops this Saturday. As I see the mayor nodding, she will, she's a part of that program. And so she'll be out there this Saturday with them. And so they invited our residents who had registered for our 22nd class to come out to that event. So I've sent out flyers to those members who signed up for the 22nd that they're invited to the Saturday event. So I'm thankful for that connection. And Clayton County has also signed on to teach at least one of our classes each month at Brady. So we are just strengthening our partnerships with people around town to bring technology to our seniors. We have AI teachers coming in. We have all kind of different partners that are looking to come in and partner and get our seniors going. We are, I'll kind of switch over a little bit to the garden now. With the garden, we're looking to get a garden in every ward. I believe we're pretty much there. But we just want to kind of circle them together where all the leaders of each garden, we have events together where we pull everyone together. We're looking to do maybe like raise bed fundraiser for our communities where people, hey, sometimes they just want to sit in their backyard and grow a little something. We can give them away garden beds for their backyard and give them the seeds and the knowledge to nurture that. With the lab, I've talked about the digital literacy, I'm on the next slide, I'm sorry. And we just want to create healing spaces and wellness for our community. We are currently at Brady, we're doing nutrition classes. We are through the garden, we're teaching people how to eat healthy. We have a huge dehydrator, well, we'll be teaching them how to make their own herbs and spices and all kind of fun stuff, so keep an eye out for those things. Here, this is my, I just wanted to mention this this time. And I would be happy to come back at the council meeting on the 20th if you guys see fit. I am looking, if we could do something like Ward One, where we have the senior garden already. Ward Two, Joe has a garden out there with Mr. Bobby. And due to his, his area is mostly working adults. So we were thinking that would be more of a legacy garden where they focus on nurturing the past, present, and the future. And where Tracy Arnold, you're, I've seen like you're focused more on the youth. And so I know you have the STEM programs at the Tracy Wyatt Center, so we were thinking about putting the youth garden maybe at Tracy Wyatt. And then in Ward Four, we were looking at education because we have the 4H program there. And I've talked to Fulton Fresh and they're willing to let us teach and use their kitchen there. So we're looking to kind of put it all together that way. And in saying that, the next slide, it's like a citywide gardening program. They currently have three grants that are available. One is $100,000 Citywide Grant. And there are two other smaller grants that are open right now. I talked to our city grant writer and she says that she, that we're in perfect position. She would just need to know that the council was okay with us going ahead and applying for those grants and doing it that way. Let's see, the next one. I just want us to grow and collaborate. I want to just educate our community, feed our community, nurture our community, and become one big, healthy community. And that's it, together we win.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mayor Burton.
Holly, I absolutely adore you. I just met Holly last, I think you came to one of my community meetings and a neighbor that had some issues and we met and we began talking and one thing led to another. And here you are. Some people dip their toe in the water, some people put their whole foot in the water. But I watched you jump headfirst, bodyfully emerged in the water of College Park. I truly appreciate what you have done at the Brady for our seniors, technology-wise, gardening-wise. But it doesn't stop there. So I just have to, you know, just give a shout out to you saying thank you. We see you at the, you're involved in the, throughout this city. I could name all these different events, but I won't because I don't want to prolong the time today. But I want to thank you. I love the idea and I know that your focus, your passion, your heart, what you yearn for is to see all four wards working together, for us to do events together. I love the concept. If my council members, if that's what's needed, I hope that that would be some consensus that we would go for that grant and have these, you know, these specific specified gardens. We've got the Botanical Garden, that's a different level project. But smaller garden spaces for our community and then have moved from one part of the community together and everybody does things together, but you still have it locally. I love that concept. So I just want to say thank you. You make my job so easy because you work so hard. You're diligent, you persevere. I don't, people say I'm everywhere. I don't know when you sleep. But I want to say thank you again, thank you for this presentation. Thank you for also demonstrating how one can go beyond the call of duty when they're passionate and they love their city. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Carr.
All right, thank you, Holly, great job, great presentation. You've been doing a lot of work, a lot of workload in College Park. When I first met you, I didn't know that you were an actual farmer, was a farm. You don't look like a farm type. But great presentation. And next time you come back, maybe you can answer a question for me that's been around for many, many decades. Which one came first, the chicken or the egg?
I knew you would say.
So we want to, hopefully, if you can answer that, then you're going to be smarter than the average farmer. But thank you for everything.
Councilmember Arnold.
Thank you, Holly, for the presentation. I would love for us to talk more about your presentation, especially as it relates to Ward Three. If you could get with Jada so that we can have a conversation about that. There is a community garden that already exists in Ward Three right here in the downtown area, right off of Harvard, Harvard at the Diamond. So, but we'll talk more about that when we, when we get something on the calendar. Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
And there's one right on the edge of Clayton County, too.
Yeah.
To wrap it up.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gay.
I appreciate all you do, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you so much.
Can I say just two quick things? I did, in my nerves, I forgot to mention that Main Street Association, Main Street School, elementary school, they are in partnership with me, so we've been working together. Keep College Park Beautiful, I've also been working with them. And in Ward Three, the Gabby Road Garden that's there that you just mentioned with Andre, we've also talked. So, in nerves, I kind of skipped over that part of the slideshow. But I have been working and talking to all those parties.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Next agenda item, discussion on HVAC upgrade at City Hall by Train US Inc. Staff recommends approval of an HVAC upgrade at City Hall to be performed by Train US Inc. This project will be executed under the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Contract, which covers HVAC products, installation, labor-based solutions, and related services. This item is not budgeted. This agenda item is being requested by Jarrell Jones' procurement manager.
Good evening.
Evening. Mayor Broom, as well as the council members, city manager, the rest of the staff. My name is Walter Reed, I'm an account executive with Train Technologies. I have Tommy Brown with me, another account executive in Train Technologies. We're going to go over briefly what we did and what we.
Can you make sure you, at the microphone?
Yes, we're going to go over briefly what happened over the last month and a half and what we found and what our recommendations are.
Tommy Brown is Walter Manchin account executive and one of the engineers helping to do the evaluation here at City Hall. So I'll admit, I did not expect to be the second person to say chiller in a council meeting today. So previous speaker, she definitely pays attention because she remembered that term.
Yes.
Wanted to start with just an overview of City Hall, the HVAC systems, how they heat and cool. Not going to get too deep, but yeah, there we go. Awesome, so really just wanted to try to build the case and understanding where the systems are and what we found. So try to relate it to your, to the systems you might have at your house. So you've got an indoor unit and an outdoor unit, right? The outdoor unit is your, it cools, the indoor unit is your furnace, right? City Hall's not too different from that. You have the outdoor unit that does the cooling, that is the chiller. If you go out the front of the building and take a ride and look to the right on the portico, you'll see it over there in the corner. When the chiller goes down, everybody knows it because it is the only thing that cools this building, right? So it provides all the cooling, same with your house. Little different than your house, you have 21, they're called parallel induction units. They're the heating units, they're electric and they sit up in the ceiling. They're like the furnace at your house, right? They're about the same size, there's 21 of them. So if one goes down, you might just think that your, your office neighbor is annoying because they say it's cold and you're, you feel great. Well, they might actually be cold. If the heating in that unit is down, then that space will be too cold. So just overall, that's kind of the background, just to give you, to set the stage. Going to go to the next slide. So our team did an investigation of the systems out here. So we did a couple of walks with train engineers to just understand what was going on in the system. And then we had a technician come out and actually look at the system as well and run it through some functional testing. So one of the things we ended up finding was there was lack of communication on some of the devices, namely chiller, a couple of the air handlers and some of the heating units up in the ceiling. Those lead to conflicting values in communication between the systems. Am I heating, am I cooling type deal? Overall, we found deficient, heating deficiencies in 11 of the 21 heating units. And what that leads to is potential overcooling. Because the system, if it cools too much, it can't reheat itself and then you're cold. So wanted to call out on the table on the right, one of the things we try to do, we do the evaluation. We also want to compare it to industry standards. And so ASHRAY, the acronym, and the second column there is American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers. They are the code and governing body for HVAC. They give a, an expected useful life for these types of components in your building. And so you can see 20 years on a chiller, 20 years on a PIU, 25 to 26 on an air handler. The age of the building is 24 years, so all the units have exceeded their useful life, which is a good thing, you've gotten more out of them than was expected. A lot of them are still in good condition and so it's a testament y'all have been able to maintain them this long. So, but they are, they are, yeah, they are where they are typically expected to be replaced. So, next slide. And so this kind of lists out our recommendations and some pricing associated with that. So our recommendation is to replace all of those heating units. So they're past their useful life and over half of them aren't functioning properly right now in some manner. And so we can't predict when the other ones might fail. And taking these things out of the ceiling is an invasive procedure for your employees and constituents in this building. And so if you're going to get up there and start replacing them, let's go ahead and extend the useful life of the facility, you know, by another 20 years or whatever. So the other thing we recommend is a new building automation system. As you saw on the previous slide, a lot of these units weren't talking to each other, so they weren't really coordinating what was going on.
The building automation system is basically the brains, that's how, the building automation system is basically the brains of the building telling all the units what to do. So we recommend that you actually replace the brain, which currently you don't. The system that you currently have isn't acting adequately, so we recommend replacing it.
And then we've got a couple optional things. So the chiller outside is working and it is in fairly good condition for the age that it is. So we, we would recommend prioritizing the heating and the brains portion of the system so that, so that everything's communicating and functioning properly. So I guess, and then we've provided an optional one-year maintenance agreement with two optional renewals if you so wish to go that route. Next slide. So the procurement vehicle that we are, we've proposed this under is the Omni contract 3341. It's with Ransine County, Wisconsin. If you're familiar with cooperative purchasing, it was a competitively bid contract that Ransine put out on the street. Train was selected for that as a award provider. And they allow you to utilize their contract to procure the same services and materials as well. So and then the last slide. So just quickly what the next steps look like. So we've done our HVAC audit and recommended our solutions. The next immediate step will be procurement or confirmation of procurement through the Omni contract. And then we would go into contract award and then construction planning and mobilization.
Thank you, gentlemen. Questions? Mayor Burton?
Yes, okay. We did just have the chiller in one of our recreation centers replaced. And I think, did it take about two weeks, Lance, was it two, three weeks, how long?
It probably took about two or three weeks a year to remove.
Okay.
Mr. Terry?
I'm sorry, I didn't want you to have to come all the way down.
We can't, the folks at home can't hear you if you're not talking into a microphone.
And I'm asking.
Hold on one second, let him just answer.
I'm speaking, I'm still speaking, I can speak while he's coming.
Mayor Protem, just give him an opportunity to answer the question.
I was still speaking because I'm the one that asked him the question. The reason I'm asking Lance to come is because I want to compare, make some comparisons. So go ahead, Mr. Lance.
I think the entire project took about two or three weeks for us to remove everything. But to do the total replacement with the new units, probably took us about two months, three months.
Okay. And I guess, so my question was going to be to you about how long did you, do you think this would take to do this work? And then, of course, because when you're dealing with a chiller, don't you need to get behind the walls or in the ceilings or something like that? So like, how destructive is this going to be in the process here at City Hall in redoing this?
I'm not sure with this one.
I think that.
Yeah, I'm asking them, yeah, I was, because of what we were dealing with. We had to get a makeup crew. And I kind of want to see that in your prices, that include restoring the facility, the building to the way you found it?
Yes.
Okay.
So internally, we're removing the ceiling tiles.
Okay.
We made the ceiling tile grid to work on the PIU, as Tom mentioned before. Because they're all up in the ceiling, between the ceiling of each floor. The chiller, if you decide to place chiller now, that's outside.
Right.
So the chiller, thank goodness the chiller sits outside.
Right.
But internally, we would go to each office that has a PIU in it, take the ceiling down, replace it, and then put the ceiling tiles back up.
Okay, so basically, all of that would be, that would be the 423 or whatever, forty-something thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Price, okay. So that would be everything, including putting it back like, well, it's going to be better than you found it, of course.
Much better.
Because we're going to be better than we were. Okay, so that, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, so our project management team would work with your staff to plan around spaces and where to start. We'd want to start with the units that aren't working first and work around. But we also have provisions to cover furniture and other things while that work's going on so that they just make sure that we return it the way we found it.
Yeah, but we'd definitely work with your staff. We can't assume we can come in here and just start tearing things up without the approval of your team.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Carr.
All right, thank y'all for coming out. Just had a few quick questions. I want you to give me the short answers, not the long answers, the short answers. I read through this thing and from what I see, looks like the HVAC systems controllers are going to be connected to the local actual network, you know, through the, it says to the IP address. Now, if by some chance we get a network interruption, how does it reset, I guess? Or in other words, does this system have some type of redundancy put in it in terms of, I guess what I'm looking for is uninterrupted service?
Yeah, so great question. So the equipment actually, if you lost a network connection, it actually makes, the brains are actually on the equipment. You just might not be able to access it remotely. But it would still function the way that it was when the network went down. But it would still function the way that it was when the network went down. So if, ideally, that's a temporary, uh, drop. But if the network went down, we'd have to work with your IT staff and figure out how we can get remote access again.
Okay, so, so would we, you all have to train someone to, if, if the network goes down to go, you said it's attached to the system to, to, is it like to figure out the reset button?
Part of our proposal is, is training, right? So we'll train someone of your staff to access it.
I saw that. That was my next question. Are eight hours of customer, of, of training sufficient? Uh, you know, what if we need a little more time and, uh, city manager? I know it used to be just, you know, the clerk handled the building, the city clerk. But, but now it's more computer oriented in the sense of who's gonna handle the HVAC system, I guess, on a day-to-day, I guess, in City Hall?
We have a facilities manager that's coming along.
You did, you did have it. Good, good. Okay, that answers that question. Um, I understand about the PIUs and I heard they're supposed to be more energy efficient and whatnot. But would you be replacing any of the ducting system to a small, smaller ducts that I hear that you go to smaller? Uh, and it, I mean, are you gonna be doing that or?
Uh, so part of the proposal includes a test and a balance of that system. Those ducts typically last longer than, than the equipment, right? They don't have moving pieces and parts. Um, I think ASHRAE rates them forty years. So we would not be re, we would not be moving duct work around. That's a, a more invasive and, uh, addresses different problems that, that y'all don't have here, so.
Okay, so this duct, no replacement of the duct system?
Yeah.
Okay, what about a good cleaning? Do we get regular cleanings or does anybody know? Just curious.
Yeah, so, um, at a, a building this age, we typically wouldn't need to clean the duct work. Um, a test and balance would just rebalance the air flows. But that's what filter changes do. Filter changes keep dirt and grime from getting down into your duct work. So, um, you're, you're, you probably wouldn't need a cleaning at this point, so.
Okay. Uh, last thing, I, I, I see a five-year parts and labor, uh, warranty. Is there an option for an extended warranty? Uh, what would it take to get a ten-year warranty? This is, this is a big chunk of change here we're talking about.
Yeah, for a ten-year warranty, we'd have to price it accordingly, right? We added the five-year warranty because that, that typically, you know, actually industry standard is a year. Um, we added five, we put a five-year on there. Um, we can probably price up an additional five years.
So the five years come with, with the package?
Yes.
I'd like to see an option on ten.
Okay.
For that. Uh, last thing, uh, one thing staff asks about are individual, individual duct control of some sort. Is that a possibility? You know, people have different preferences in different halls or rooms. Is that a, uh?
Yeah, so each, you got twenty-one, twenty-eight different control devices in the space. Those will all be individually controlled. Uh, they'll be up to your facilities team to, uh, set those and, and make adjustments for your staff. You can, of course, give people control at the wall. A lot of times you get into something where someone jacks it down to sixty degrees, comes back the next day and you've got something that's burned up because of that. So, um, typically we put a range on it, but yeah, it'll all have individual zone level control.
But it won't be wall controls for everybody?
No, it, it, it'll be based on where those units are located.
Okay.
And that's based on how the building was designed.
All right. Well, let's look at, I wanna look at that ten. See what, see what, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Arnold?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
Oh, I just had a couple of quick questions. Do your group self-perform or is this being subbed out?
Uh, yeah, we, we self-perform, uh, in most cases. There are some specialized portions of this that we would sub out.
Uh, can you let the attorney review your Omni contract to make sure it's in a line to our procurement policies?
Yes, sir.
That's a question over there.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, will you still be required a performance bond, Mr. Jones? Will they still be required a performance bond even though this, this is so, so, uh, will they still be required a performance bond?
Yes.
They will. And how long will it take to retrofit the entire system if they choose to let you do that? And can you work nights and weekends?
To answer the second question, yes, we can work nights and weekends. Um, but we'd have to price it accordingly. We price it based upon daily work, nine to five, right? So we'd have to look at that.
As, as far as how long, so let me just clarify. So is this the, the full project? What's the duration?
That was the question for the full question.
So, uh, the beginning of the project, there's some engineering design that would go into it and equipment lead times. Uh, typically somewhere between eight and, and twelve weeks. Um, and then we're expecting a, a similar, uh, probably, I would say twelve to sixteen weeks on, on installation. So I think start to finish, you're probably looking at seven, uh, eight, eight months with some unknown.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I think, uh, Mr. Rainey from the Old National Merchants Association is here. So we'll go ahead and hear his presentation at that time, at this time.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Always. Salutations to you. Let me know when it starts.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is regarding the Old National Merchants and College, City of College Park teaming up on facade grants. As you see from your, uh, presentation that I've submitted, uh, these are, the purpose of the facade grant is to basically encourage those on the corridor to, to seek some exterior beautifications along with this, within the City of College Park. Uh, I don't have anything. Can I hit buttons or something? The next slide?
Just let her know, next slide.
Next slide. Uh, the proposed scope, uh, pretty much to repair, replace any of the storefronts systems, masonry restoration, cleaning or painting installation of awnings, exterior lighting upgrades, safety and vis- visibility improvement. Next, next slide, please. Uh, there are qualifications for each applicant. Uh, the qualifications range from a difference, uh, that are all, hopefully, that will be coordinated with, with the City of College Park. Uh, to ensure each applicant and their projects truly qualified. Panel reviewers will review each applicant, each application and verify with the City of College Park all the needed information. Uh, we'll go to the next slide, please. Uh, what, these are the type of information they will need. They will have to be a business owner, of course, within the City of College Park. Their taxes and business license will have to be up to date. Uh, the property owner, they have to be a property owner or, uh, or tenant within the City of College Park. They must be a business, up-to-date business, and they must be a member within the Old National, Old National Merchants Association. Next slide, please. Uh, facade grant writing, there are numerous ways that we can, uh, qualify or disqualify people to that note. Uh, applicants may receive up to fifty percent of eligible costs with a max of five thousand per property. We do the max for five thousand, dealing that there's already a, a lump sum that's given. And with that lump sum, uh, we can split it up amongst numerous businesses. Uh, all grants must be pre-approved before starting any project. That means before anything is done, we, you all will have to coordinate with us that you all approve of what's happening. The City of College Park will approve the project as complete. So that means nobody will be able to receive their funding unless you all say the project is complete. And the City of College Park, whatever, uh, whatever improvement system that we all come up with and according with you all, if there's a code enforcement or whatever that needs to be done and make sure everything's in a line, alignment within your city, uh, city codes, uh, that we are doing that. Next, please. And I think that's the end of it. I believe so. Uh, therefore, we again, thank you, we're as, uh, a member of Old National Merchants Association. We have been partnering since nineteen eighty-nine within the City of College Park and the City of South Fulton. Again, these funds will only go through to businesses within the College Park corridor. All, uh, people who are on committees will only be members and resident or residents of the City of College Park. Uh, to, you, you know, you cannot have, if you've received a grant from the city in the past two years, you will not be eligible for this, uh, unless that's something you all wanna change. Otherwise, all of the other, uh, uh, items that may incur would, would definitely come through the Old National Merchants Association. Is there anything, any questions? I'm here standing.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pritta?
No, thank you for the wonderful presentation. So basically, we haven't given any grants out. You're just working on formulating the program.
We, we can formulate the program. I will submit it to you all to make sure it's up to you all's, uh, process. Now, my board wants to make sure there is nothing, let me say it again, Councilman Gay, there is nothing that we will have in here that will not, uh, MP or whatever you all are doing within the city. We wanna make sure of that.
Well, thank you again. We are looking forward to seeing those improvements.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr?
Uh, great presentation. Uh, looking forward to those grants coming out.
Yes, sir.
No questions.
Councilmember Arnold?
No questions. Thank you for putting together the presentation, giving us the update and giving us, um, the process that, uh, they will have to go through in order to receive the funds.
Councilmember Gay?
Hey, Mr. Rainey, thank you for, uh, being on the board and your leadership on Old National. I have a couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
One, the facade, there, there are not a lot of storefronts on our side except for past, past, what? Is this just for the storefronts?
No, it's for any exterior, any exterior beautification that can be seen from the street. So it could be, uh, benches. It could be, uh, uh, art project. It could be cleaning. But these, these, whatever is done has to be maintained by the customer.
I'm talking about the plazas don't qualify, right?
Unless they, unless they, unless it's part of that fund. I mean, you know, if a plaza owner comes to me and says, hey, I wanna, uh, be part of Old National Merchants and, and do, uh, uh, some signage, some storefronts, uh, I mean, they can get a max of five thousand dollars.
Okay.
I mean, it could be, it may cost them fifty, but we, we only doing five.
I understand.
Unless that's something you all wanna override. That's, that, that would be on you all.
No, I think it's a great idea. Hey, while I got you, I wanna piggyback on a question. I haven't talked to my colleague yet. I haven't had a chance to call her. But I'm getting calls, I'm getting calls about the medium that's being built.
Yes, sir.
From, from Gobby to, um, Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
And they saying that it's gonna, uh, hurt their businesses.
That's correct.
I was wondering if we, somebody can get, Joe Mike can do this. We can get in touch with our board, a G dot board member?
Stacy Key.
And see if we might can understand if they have to put a medium there.
Well, that same complaint has been raised all the way going down towards, uh, in City of South Fulton, JJ's, Artin's Garden. They all have hurt their businesses, uh, because you can't turn a left. So for years, it's been a complaint of, of traffic control, of people crossing, um, the four lanes, four lanes of moving traffic. So that's their way of resolving it. The resolution is, you know, I don't know who they spoke to. They didn't speak to Old National Merchants. I talked to South Fulton. They said they didn't speak to them. So it was something G dot came up with on their own to, uh, to combat that. And they've already moved, started and almost finished, as you see.
But not, not the last, I'm talking about the last.
The last part that's in College Park.
With the, where the, where the barriers are. They're trying to, we can stop that last, the one that'll stop you from turning into the, uh, plaza, the, uh, International Service Plaza, that last apron.
Help me out with International Service Plaza. You talking about the one?
Old Service Merchandise Plaza.
So you can turn right. You just can't turn.
Can't turn left.
You can turn right. You can't turn, come in, see what they did in that case, if you notice, people were turning, were turning right to bypass the interstate to make a quick U-turn across to get back on the interstate. That, that's what most folks from here, that's how they know how to avoid the traffic light, the light. So instead of waiting to turn left to get on the two eighty-five, they would just keep straight, turn into that plaza and go down. So they just, they feel like that was a safety hazard, uh, that they wanted to avoid. And unfortunately, no one, uh, you know, when G dot made, made their decision, it was a decision they made. Atropolis, no one had any, any, uh, uh, input on that.
Well, I, I will say.
Hold on, Councilmember Carr, hold on.
No, I don't have any other question.
All right. Councilmember Carr?
A lot of that came from some requests. I think the City of South Fulton had a few issues going on. There were a lot of traffic accidents, obviously, but there were a lot of pedestrian accidents that were going on along Old National where people weren't crossing, where there weren't crosswalks, dark clothing. I think there was a fatality in South Fulton or one or two at some point in time.
It was, but those areas were down near, uh, Flat Shoals and one was near Camelot. And they did put a, a traffic, uh, stop there, but that traffic stop ended up, uh, being null and void and they removed it after about four, after, after it got torn up. So I, I get what you're saying, but the, the logic behind it, before, they at least had community engagement and, uh, a, you know, swap for, for, for what it's worth to bring everybody together and ask some questions. But this time, there were no questions asked of anyone. It was just something G dot came in and said they could do because it's a state highway.
Well, city manager, uh, maybe we oughta maybe reach out to G dot, to, to Mrs. Commissioner Key's office and if there's an interest in maybe an option on that tail end there, uh, uh, maybe see if there's, there's anything we could, we could do. So they haven't heard from the Old National Merchants Association.
This is a prime example of where Old National Merchants can, can be a force. When you talk about two cities or three, when you include Fayetteville and people coming out there interstate and the businesses that are affected, uh, in a negative right, in negative light when it comes to, because it's more dangerous now for people coming from this end, going to a JJ's or Artin's Garden, uh, is, is, is even more dangerous. So, uh, that's something to consider. So I would recommend that, you know, that we all get together and when we go, it's not just College Park talking. It's College Park, South Fulton and the entire corporate, uh, corridor of the Old National corridor speaking. That's just my opinion, though, maybe for what it's worth.
I think we oughta at least look at it, see, see if there are any options on that tail end before they finalize. Uh, I know we had a big meeting with G dot before with, uh, AB, kind of facilitated that meeting with, uh, I facilitated it along with AB, with Commissioner Key and, and the head engineers for our region. So, uh, you know, it might be good to know, you know.
In times past, I believe it was, I don't think he's here anymore, but Jackson Myers, we had a great relationship with G dot when it came to, uh, bus stops and facades for bus stops. So those, uh, those, a lot of, a lot of those people are not here anymore. So they're just, you know, doing what they do.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rainey. Appreciate your time.
Thank you all.
Next agenda item, Karasoff Polymorphic AI Innovations Workshop Demonstration. Polymorphic is the AI company that has chosen to deploy AI chatbot and audio citywide to serve staff, residents and executives. This is not a budgeted item, but will be paid from R and M Equipment, one hundred dash fifteen thirty-five dash fifty-two dash five-seven-three-zero, fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Good evening, uh, to the mayor, to the council, to Mr. Hicks, to Mr. Francis, Mr. Gerald and countless others. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're, uh, we're very excited to represent, um, our company, Polymorphic, and how we help local governments, cities, counties across the country, um, become smarter and ultimately simplify government operations through the use of AI. Um, along with my colleague and our solutions consultant, Nav, um, we're gonna, uh, take you through, um, what we do here at Polymorphic and, and how specifically we'll be able to help College Park.
Thank you. So I have a personal belief that these things have changed society forever. They've made us a lot more connected, but they've also probably made us a lot less patient. Especially when you can go in and order whatever I want in about two clicks on my phone. Sometimes dealing with local government does not always feel that way. Next slide, please. It sometimes feels a bit more like, uh, like this over here. And so what we propose and what we're coming to talk about today is how we use, next slide, please. How we use AI to bring that sort of private sector interacting with the business experience to work, for, for residents to work when they work with, uh, the City of College Park.
So over the last couple of weeks, um, with Mr. Hicks, with Mr. Francis and with others here at College Park.
You can make sure you're coming to the microphone.
Sorry. Uh, we've discussed the, the project, um, which is the city-led initiative to ultimately deploy AI across all departments, um, from clerks to public works and everything in between. Um, powered by our chat and our voice automation, ultimately, our goal is to deliver faster and smarter service to every resident of College Park. Ultimately, this covers utilities, public safety, inspections, sanitation, recreation. The list goes on and on, ultimately being able to help every department within the city. Um, ultimately, uh, we've boiled down to, um, and this was a great quote on one of our meetings that we had with Mr. Francis. We wanna move in the direction of using AI to make the city more efficient and more transparent. Um, ultimately, residents, residents, as Nav said, are demanding faster answers. Fewer call transfers, fewer phone. Fewer call transfers, fewer phone trees, press one for, press two for, um, and twenty-four, seven, and after-hours support for critical issues that might occur on nights or weekends. Um, ultimately, this project will directly address the transparency concerns of residents of College Park.
What we often see in College Park and other communities is, a lot of the time, questions are repeat questions. It's the same handful over and over again. And it's important to answer these questions for residents who may be interacting with them for the first time. But for staff, these can sometimes eat up a lot of time. So what we're proposing today is an alternative, it's an option for residents to self-service some of their inquiries while taking some of the lone, uh, frontline staff. It's not, uh, it's a way for folks to reach out and find their answers without necessarily making a phone call, unless they want to make a phone call. We live by a simple principle here, and this is my personal belief as well, is that we see AI everywhere in society these days. I want AI to do my laundry and dishes. I want it to handle the simple stuff so I can focus on the complex stuff that deserves my time and attention. And judged by what, of course, we are not College Park residents, but judged by what we've seen tonight, sitting back there through several presentations, this is a place that cares a lot about its community. And we want staff to spend the time serving their community, spending more time serving their community than probably answering the same handful of questions over and over again. I think at the interest of time, would it make sense if we skip forward to the demo? So the first part of the process of the proposed solution that we, we are here to talk about today is an AI chatbot for folks that prefer to go to the website to self-service their issues. So for example, if we type in a question like, how do I pay my water bill? What the AI does is it will read through College Park's website and associated supported documents and come by with step-by-step instructions about what options are available to pay this bill. This works for any content on the website, so for example, if we wanted to ask, uh, who is Councilwoman Arnold, for example? It'll come back with a biography here, as well as a link to her page, making sure that source documentation is easily accessible. Not everyone prefers to use the website, however, so what we're also proposing is a phone tree replacement. Oftentimes, when folks call in, myself included, I'm not always sure about what department exactly handles what. So what we're suggesting here is an AI-powered phone line that replaces the phone tree. If I call in, this AI-powered line will answer some of those simple questions, and if I still need assistance, or even if I just prefer speaking to a person, I can say, patch me through, and I get sent to the right place the first time around, not like Comcast where they kind of bounce me from place to place. What it sounds like is something like this.
You've reached the automated attendant for College Park on a recorded line. How may we serve you today?
How do I rent the convention center?
Thank you for your question. To rent the Georgia International Convention Center in College Park, you can find information about accommodations, catering, floor plans, and submitting a request for proposal on their official website. The convention center is a cashless facility, and you can also view event calendars and media galleries online. Would you like more details about the rental process or need help contacting the convention center directly?
Could I get this information texted to me, please?
I can send you a text message with a link to the official page that has all the details about renting the Georgia International Convention Center. Would you like me to go ahead and send that information to your phone now? The information and a link to the Georgia International Convention Center rental details have been sent to your phone. Is there anything else I can assist you with today?
So we'll go ahead and text him a link now, and he can view all that information on his cell phone. The entire idea is to reduce the amount of friction it takes to find out answers to your questions and get folks to the right place, uh, immediately. I know we're running up on time here, so, uh, I think we're good to open it up to questions.
Thank you so much, Mayor Britton.
I don't have any, thank you so much.
Councilmember Khan?
Uh, I see the, uh, initial cost, is that an annual cost, or what are we, what are we talking about annually?
That would be an annual cost. All services, implementations, and training for, for staff are included within the cost of the contract. There'll be no additional costs outside of what is presented.
Is that annual cost going to remain static, or is it going to change from year to year? Or do we, can we lock in that for five years or ten years, or?
Correct, absolutely. If you're looking at a multi-year contract, we'd be, we'd be happy to have that discussion with you. Um, typically, I believe the, it just adjusts, uh, based on the CPI index, uh, to the cost of inflation, so you can't, you wouldn't expect it to double or anything like that. Um, but certainly there is multi-year agreements available if that's a, a route that you prefer to go, absolutely.
I, I've heard that before, that the cost won't increase in four years later. But, uh, uh, any other local municipalities have this technology yet?
Um, yeah, absolutely. So we're working with, uh, with cities and counties all across, uh, the United States specifically. Um, I've been with the, the company here in Polymorphic, I'm representing Georgia and Tennessee, so I've worked with, with governments for many years now. Um, but this is the beginning of our presence here in Georgia and Tennessee. We're working with a ton of folks in Florida, North Carolina, um, and some neighboring states as well. Um, and we've seen so much success and so much experience, um, in the Southeast that we're expanding now into Georgia and Tennessee to, to keep helping governments with, you know, answering these same questions over and over, with being able to really help residents meet them where they are.
Okay.
Outside, outside of Georgia, we work with over a hundred clients, ranging from smaller organizations like towns of eighteen hundred people in Wisconsin, to large cities like San Francisco and the state of Florida.
Okay, I'm all for good technology, we want to be, you know, state-of-the-art and the whole nine. Uh, but at the same time, we got a lot of folks that aren't so tech-savvy, and we need to keep that in mind. There are a lot of residents that do want to speak with someone and, uh, directly and address con, questions, but more importantly, concerns, um, that a chatbot may not be able to answer when you have a concern. You follow what I mean?
Yes, sir, this is not in any way, shape, or form meant to replace a human being. It's merely to add a new option for folks that might have a question at eleven PM on a Sunday.
All right, well, one thing, we, we've been, years ago, city manager, we were really famous for is, when someone did call these departments, somebody would pick up their phone. And we've kind of strayed away from that a bit, uh, there's some people that still depend on that and expect that as well. A lot of companies in corporate America nowadays, the trend is, we don't want to talk to anybody. They avoid the phone calls at any, any cost, and that may work for a certain, you know, demographic, but at the same time, there are other folks that, that want to, want to get on the phone with someone. Uh, so, uh, we just want to keep that in mind, and we want to keep answering those phones too, if we step into this new stuff. All right.
Councilmember Arnold?
Although I missed the bulk of the presentation, um, duty call, um, I, I am excited that we are looking at, um, some assistive technology to support the staff, um, not to, definitely not to replace the staff, but to augment in ways that will help them to then be able to, um, do some more strategic type of work and to also be there to, to respond to those who do need that additional assistance. So, um, I'm always excited when there's technology involved. So, uh, thank you for the presentation, and, um, I'm looking forward to us seeing how we can leverage it.
Councilmember Gay?
Uh, I think it's a good idea, and thank you for Councilwoman Arnold for sponsoring it for the city. Hey, I have a question, not replace the staff, but can it support us when people call after hours and route, like, our fire, our lights out after hours and even deficiencies? Can it route it to us, our phones, like it sent that text to, um?
Yes, sir. So what we saw today was just a prototype or a first pass. When we start to implement using your guidance and input, what we'll do is we'll set up transfer logic and rules. So when someone calls about a certain subject, they get direct to the right place the first time around. So for example, if I called about a building permit, I would probably want that to go to one place. And so to Councilman Khan's point here, what we do with this routing logic is we still keep a human in the loop, but we send folks to the right place. That way, I, 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 as a resident, don't feel like I have to play telephone just because I've dialed the wrong department number.
I said after hours.
Yes, sir, after hours, what it'll do is it'll either route to, uh, wherever you'd like it to send to. So some folks like to go to a personal cell, some folks like it to go to a voicemail, and so it could route to wherever you, i- is, is desired.
Anything else?
No.
All right, uh, what's the timeline for implementation?
The timeline's going to depend a little bit on College Park's, uh, feedback and internal procedure. We've stood up clients in as little as a day. Um, we've also had clients that have wanted to test the product out for a month. I would say on average, we see about a two- to three-week implementation timeline.
All right, thank you so much, gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, we will pick back up, take a brief break, we'll take about a fifteen-minute break, and we will pick that up, pick back up a little bit after, we'll just pick it back up at seven fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five, seven fifty-five.